Testing.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda, please. Motion in the second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Nobody left to oppose.
Mr. Ray, most holy and gracious Father Lord, we give you thanks for this day. Thank you for the blessings that you so freely give us. Bless the men and women of this board and the decisions that we make. Or that we prove to be faithful stewards of what you've provided us. For your sons, most honorable, in this name, I pray, amen.
Please continue to stand and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to item five, citizen comments. We have no one signed up, so I'm gonna move right on to minutes. Consider approval of the January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, regular scheduled meeting minutes. Make a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve. I have a second. All in favor? All opposed? Alright, next item is consider acceptance of the February twelfth, twenty twenty five, joint committee meeting minutes as presented. Motion to approve. A motion by Mr. Davis, do I have a second? Have a second, all in favor, please raise your hand. Item. Seventh, general manager report, consider acceptance of the general manager report as presented by general manager Johnson. Roll on with that one.
So looking at the customers for FY twenty five, we're hanging around the one and a half percent mark. The water sales, uh, year to date, or fiscal year to date is up roughly eight percent. Our meter deficit's still showing about fifty-one as of the print date of this report, but I will tell you after looking at it this morning, uh, it looks like there's a timing. So we're, we've already, um, it's back in the, the low forties. So, uh, we're thinking that things may be picking up again, but there's more to come on that.
Question for you, Joseph.
Sir.
Most of these meter sales, new construction or replacement for?
New. New construction.
Most of it's new construction.
Yes, sir. So, uh, one thing to think about is, you know, we, um, we've modified our water tap fee. Just know that roughly fifteen percent of new installs are water taps. Eighty-five percent is contractor, so Pulte Home, Sun City, Grayson Park, those are who is mainly doing them.
Well, eighty-five percent are.
Yes, sir.
Track builders.
Yes, sir. Uh, the non-revenue water, uh, we did not receive the report from the city of Griffin, so January is not included in this. And then the fire hydrant maintenance, you're gonna see that we haven't done anything since we met our goal as of December last year. Our fire hydrant maintenance activities are gonna be performed in a six-month time period in two phases. So we're gonna look at March through, um, May, and then if we don't finish it up, we're gonna restart it in September through November. We don't wanna do fire hydrant flushing during the, um, the, the summer to big, and in order to keep the demand down from the city of Griffin. So though, that's the strategy we're gonna do in order to satisfy the fire hydrant maintenance. From the project aspect, um, the, our team has, we have some pretty good, uh, updates on confirm. So Parker has worked with Chris and the GIS team with confirm, and we're starting to slowly roll out. Um, we're in the inquiry phase now where Charlie, anytime that a customer calls or we get something, we're starting to track it now. So, uh, we're gonna slowly roll this thing out over the next three to four months. So hopefully our team will be using it in the field to perform all, um, distribution maintenance. I, I would say by July one. And then we have been hard, uh, at work on the GMP price, so the value engineering, uh, has continued with the progressive design build. We have given them marching orders that we are expecting them to have a phase two B contract ready to present to you guys. in March of this year, so next, at our next meeting. And that's about everything that we have. Obviously, we're working on the budget, but, um, that's, that's the projects in a nutshell. Any questions?
How's the sewer use ordinance going?
That is going, uh, one of the, the hiccups on that is we're waiting for the final DDR to be approved through the state because that's going to specify the criteria, the permit requirements, that is gonna be referenced in the sewer use ordinance. So, um, and then we still have to develop an industrial pretreatment plan because this is gonna be where our plant can only take typical domestic waste. Anything over to typical domestic waste is gonna have to be pretreated before it's sent to us. It's, the city of Griffin has an industrial pretreatment, any utility has that because it ensures that no industry or no user would discharge something that could require us to bust permit.
I know a guy who knows a lady.
We're gonna do that in-house, or, I'm sorry?
I know a guy who knows a lady.
What to, what to manage the industrial pretreatment?
To write the, uh, to do the industrial.
No, that's part of, uh, we have a, we've asked R two T to parrot as a quote, to help work in conjunction with Rebecca to do that. We figured that since they're gonna be the engineer of record, that it would probably be in our best interest if they, they designed the plant, they know the plant, um, design criteria and the permit requirements. Let them help us develop it, and it's something that when a, we will develop a fee structure for any non-typical user, i.e. light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing, or just a commercial development that doesn't provide typical domestic waste, they're gonna have to pay someone to review their discharge requirements in conjunction with our plan.
Is it the customer's responsibility or ours to pretreat?
So it will be the customers, but we have to inspect what we expect, so we're gonna have to, once this customer comes online, now, we have monthly reporting that they're gonna be providing to us where we're gonna ensure that they're not doing anything that they're not allowed to do.
But we won't be doing any pretreating?
We will not. It will be on the customer's side before it discharges to our manhole. This doesn't have any bearing on if it's a warehouse or a commercial strip center or, um, typical non-residential use. This really comes into play when you have light manufacturing where they're actually taking chemicals and they're producing something. You don't want to take their effluent discharge without some type of treatment if they're gonna, they could potentially violate our nutrient limit. If it's high phosphorus or nitrates.
The big one in the city is plot hiding fur.
Yeah.
That's the biggest.
The tannery.
Do, do car washes fall under this or something like that?
No, a car wash falls under another act that the state, um, requires, and it's mainly from the standpoint of you have to reuse or reclaim, uh, over fifty percent of your water. They just don't want you to be a, um, a high water user where they want you to recycle, but the only thing you have to worry about that is the, um, the nutrients like the phosphates and the nitrates, just like you would in a washing machine, where depending on what type of, uh, cleaning chemical they use, it could pose a problem.
Launder mats actually pose a problem for a lot of places because of foam. Foam and elastation screws up elastation controls and foam and the flumes mess up the measurement of the flow, the influent and effluent, which you gotta report. So, yeah, I mean, launder mats actually can cause you quite a bit of issues too, of all things.
So just know that this.
So we, we would wanna work very carefully with the county, for example, to prevent a strip shopping center going in there that's gonna have laundry mats and car washes.
We need to be aware of what's going there, yeah. Yeah, we, we're gonna have to be.
So that would, when the development comes in for review, it would be at that time, we would ask the questions, what the use is gonna be. We would have to make the determination of, do we think that this is gonna be a typical waste or a non-typical waste? And at that point, we would engage with them saying, hey, you need to give us a, um, a discharge profile where we could have it assessed.
Just a side thought, if, if you had a high-density residential house, for example, would that present any problem?
No.
That's typical household waste.
Correct. Even, even a restaurant is typical. They have a grease trap, they're gonna hold the solids in their tank that they have to be pumped out, but it's something we're gonna have to, to manage and monitor.
That's the thing, it's, you know, I, I could foresee some point high-density residential.
Well, one thing to think of, as soon as this happens, we currently don't have the staff structure to support ongoing monitoring and inspections. So it's just, it's, it's another, another layer that gets added, another layer of complexity.
Another layer of staff.
Man, I have three or four things. I apologize.
Sir.
Maybe I missed it.
I got your message. I had my phone sign by the way.
Okay. Yeah, I had to run home and get my chemo so I could feel really good today. I noticed that, uh, just to cover a couple bases, in the minutes last time, we formally requested you to request funding, a letter to the county, and you were gonna report back, which you did, I assume, for the sewer funding, Board of Commissioners.
Yes, that one. Correct.
Yeah, I don't know if you mentioned that or not, but you did. And the other, we talked about the homeowner, uh, problem with the twenty-three hundred dollar cost recovery fee for low-income folks if they had to do it, and you were gonna look for solutions, other counties and so on. Did you get any information on that?
So other jurisdictions offer a twelve-month, uh, payment plan? So we're, we've requested information from the city of Griffin if they could help support that because it's something that they would, it would have to be a fee that they would assess on the bill, but it's a pass-through. I haven't heard back from them on if they could or couldn't do that. So right now, it's still up in the air.
Okay, and I noticed in the last few months, I've been looking, we had six-point-three million gallons lost in leaks and three in breaks. Are these fair, gonna be fairly typical, or are these, we had some weird things happen?
I would have to look into the exact, um, leaks and breaks you're referring to, to, to see if they're typical.
I don't know where they were. All I know is that, there's that big spike a few months ago, the leaks and breaks, so nine million gallons, I mean, like a wa- lot of water loss, so. Are we able to determine if it was ours or the city's that they're tagging for us?
So it would be.
I'm in trouble hearing you. I said, do we know if, for example, they might have been a city break that they're charging us for?
No, so this report you're looking at is tagged city and county, so it looks at jurisdiction. So anything that's reported on this non-revenue water summary report is our physical assets.
So could we possibly, uh, Joseph, uh, could we possibly have been, you know, cleaning hydrants or draining hydrants or anything like that? How does that water accounted for?
So it would be counted for in the, um, the hydrant flushing total. So we haven't, um, flushed any hydrants since, um.
Wait, last fall, I suppose.
Yeah, last December.
Okay.
And we won't pick it back up until March of this year because we don't wanna do it in the cold or in the summertime.
I just saw that nine-point-three in breaks and leaks, and I just wonder if that was unusual or common.
So, so one of them, so main breaks, um, one of the, I'll have to check, one of the breaks may have been the one that happened on, um, Rehoboth Road on Sixth Street where they had a, there was a pretty substantial water main break where they were working all night. I mean, it, it took a couple of million gallons. But the service leaks, it's, um, the majority, non-revenue water, the thing that concerns utilities is the service leaks and not necessarily the main breaks. Those are gonna, you can identify them, cut them off pretty quick. It's the service leaks that happen for months and months. They go undetected. So, um, but I'll look into the exact causes and report back on that.
Okay, because I saw some numbers years ago, I was in the city, when I started out, a third of all water was unaccounted for.
Correct. Correct.
Which is a little excessive.
Well, that wasn't true though, because the, the city wasn't measuring, we didn't have any way to measure the water leaks on the county, and so all the water leaks were being accounted towards Spalding County rather than to losses from the city.
You'd be surprised, that ser- my service leak I had was, it totally looked about a million gallons, didn't it?
This was city water loss, a third of it according to Mr. White at the time, but anyway, I don't wanna go.
The service leak I had, uh, three-quarter inch meter totaled up to just about a million gallons over three months, and it never came to surface. I didn't notice it till the bill showed up.
I had the same thing with a hundred and ninety-six thousand gallons that my commissioner, Mr. Morrow, you, you think a hundred and ninety-six thousand gallons would show up someplace like your million gallon, but there was no evidence of anything.
I got a feeling one day I'm gonna drive across my driveway, I'm gonna fall in a hole, and I think that's where that line went, was under the driveway.
You'll refill the alcohol. Alright, thank you.
Continue on with the report.
That's, that, that's it.
Alright, and motion to accept, motion in the second to accept the General Manager's report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? All opposed? Uh, special committee report, the Joint Planning Finance Committee Report. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Morrow for the planning committee, then Mr. Davis for the finance committee.
Well, we were all intermingled, everybody had several things went on.
I think we were all there.
I'm ready to talk if you want me to, then, yeah. On, uh, twelfth February, the Joint Committee, uh, discussed the following four items. The PDB sewer project update, the consensus was to recommend to the board to direct the General Manager to submit a will serve letter to Doug Adams conditional upon the letter of intent to fund being issued to the authority. Item number two, water capital cost recovery fee, the proposed fee schedule will be presented to the regular meeting now. Uh, item number three, the water rate implementation date of one March, two thousand and twenty-five. The city of Griffin will be ready to implement the new approved rate schedule, uh, structure on, uh, March first. Item number four, the FY twenty-six budget, the General Manager provided a brief overview of the working budget. It will be ready to vote on in the March meeting. That concludes, uh, my portion, uh.
That covers it.
Sounds good. Any questions? Should be y'all all there now.
This is good after you bring up something.
Yes, sir.
If you look at our last set of minutes, motion second by Morrow Davis approving a water system capital cost recovery fee is outlined in the water rate analysis. This, blah, 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 this fee will take effect immediately, motion carry nine to zero, and yet it's on our, it's on our, uh, new business today, consider approval of water capital recovery fee schedule, so have we already done this?
So remember.
It wasn't in a regular meeting, like.
So remember, we, we talked about the, it was only for the residential side.
Okay.
Last month.
Okay.
There was a lot of questions on, how does a calculation actually happen? So we went back to Raftellus, and now we have a easy capital co- cost recovery fee to, to, uh, distribute out based on any, it's, it's gonna be tied to meter size, so it's gonna replace the one that was done last week, or last month.
Okay, that's, I just wasn't understanding why the confusion from the last set of minutes.
Appreciate you che- appreciate you checking.
Well, we're about to hear about it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions about the, uh, special committee reports? Moving on, next item, new business, consider approval of a water capital recovery fee schedule effective March first, two thousand and twenty-five. Joseph, will you walk us through this real quick?
So what you're looking at is a capital cost recu- or capital recovery fee based on meter size. So let me tell you the reason why we think, or this, it's a staff's recommendation to do this. So in last month's meeting, we talked about, if a development comes in today and gets sold and the use changes, you had a low water user and now you have a high water user, the capacity fee would have been based on the low water user, and we would have to reassess it going forward. Well, there's really no legal way to do that. So after working with, uh, we, we reached out to Stephanie, we reached out to Raftellus. If we want to get the most money possible, day one from a development, it should be tied to the meter because regardless, if they're saying that they need a six-inch meter, they know something we don't know, that they may have a, a pretty large demand. Well, by assessing a capital recovery fee based on meter size, it throws away any ambiguity and the potential for a low water user today, it to be sold to a high water user tomorrow, and we lost a, 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 a component of the capital recovery fee that we'll never be able to ever to get back. So by assessing by meter size regardless of customer class, so if you're a residential customer and you say you want a one-inch meter, you're gonna pay fifty-seven hundred bucks because it's based on how much demand you can put on our system with a one-inch meter. So I know there was questions on how do we calculate it? We, we thought this capital recovery fee is very clear, and we show you, um, there's a modified capital recovery fee because based on this capacity ratio of, we assume, two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day for a typical residential customer. All these meter capacities and, um, uh, capacity fees are based on that premise. So if you're a development, you say that you're gonna need a four-inch meter. A four-inch meter is six-hundred-and-twenty-five or six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day. If you tell us in the water availability portion of the project that you're gonna need ten thousand gallons a day, it's still within that four-inch meter threshold. You can, you can satisfy ten thousand gallons a day with a four-inch meter, but the capacity fee that we have in this chart was based on an assumed six-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty. So we are gonna modify this based on your proposed demand. So this is a way that we, w- we're gonna capture as much money upfront where we don't have to keep a list going forward of saying, well, hold on a second, this, this, this meter is using ten thousand gallons a day, but they only paid for five. So I, I hope that answers the questions and shows that we do have a strategy that is easily, um, implemented regardless of customer class, it's gonna be based on meter size.
So.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, so if in your example, we, you know, four-inch meter, you know, the, the amount, we think that there, the gallons per day is around six-two-fifty, and someone does come in and they, they say, I'm, I'm good at four-inch meter, six, you know, six thousand gallons per day. But, you know, first ninety days, we see already that you're up to ten or eleven thousand dollars. Where, what, where are we gonna be?
Stephanie, uh, chime in, but if, if, if I understand the conversations that we have with Stephanie, the only way to tie this fee for potential clawback at a later date is to actually tie it to a recorded deed?
That's the only way that it's ever going to be in, out in the public so that anybody knows about it. Because if it's not, if they're not finding it in a title exam, then there's, there, there's, you can't put the onus on a property owner to know something because they, they don't have any way of knowing it.
Well, and, and the reason I say that, I'm, you know, just looking at the sewer at the Lakeshead Green Valley and the Development Authority needed bulk capacity, whatever five million dollars worth of capacity was, totally not using it. But they paid for the ability to be able to get that much. On the other side, someone may come in and understate what their actual capacity and usage is. Did they give us correct information, or did they not know that it was correct information? There has to be some way to quantify that what you requested is appropriate for what you're using.
So I think in order to, to catch that, um, discrepancy, that will be done in the water availability and sewer availability request, where a developer would say, hey, we need ten thousand gallons a day. Well, they're gonna have to explain what their use is. We can ask questions on how many employees, how big is the property? We, we're gonna do an internal valuation to say, n- no, this doesn't make sense. You're gonna need to show me an engineering report that justifies your flow.
Okay.
So that's how we're gonna catch that, but if they say they need an eight-inch meter, I can promise you this, they're in, not many people are gonna put in an eight-inch meter if they're not expecting a whole lot of flow to be.
Can you determine the maximum flow that each meter would allow? For example, a six-inch meter, how many gallons per day?
Yes.
Can you base a charge on that, or you base a charge on what they tell you?
So by doing the meter capital or the recovery fee based on this meter size, we're doing just that. We're doing it on the maximum, uh, theor- or the, the value of the meter based on the capacity ratios as laid out in the American Water Works Association, so this is based on industry standards.
Didn't that kinda take out the?
That's right. That's right.
The, the, the idea of they want six thousand, are they really gonna use ten thousand?
That's right.
You base the meter on its maximum capacity is ten thousand anyway, and that's your recovery fee.
Well, it's, we're using the capacity ratio.
Right, yeah, but the formula should be based on what the actual meter can put through, not what, not what they tell you.
Yes, yes, and that's what this, ah, chart shows.
Okay, so, so there's no confusion with our minutes. The previous one was, doesn't say this, but it was residential only.
Correct, it was, it was residential.
So, a motion now is we implement the water rate, ah, capital cost recovery fee effective immediately for all the remaining.
March first. Correct.
Well, this, this basically gonna replace everything.
Okay.
So this is for residential and commercial.
Correct.
So it's a general across the board, no matter what your meter size is, this is what you're asking.
Every meter we sell.
Okay.
One, one quick question for conversation.
I have a motion that we.
This is, this is based on.
How about motion we approve this?
This is based on a one inch meter?
Ah, no, so it's based on a typical five eighths inch or three quarter inch meter.
Okay, should we not add that to this?
Well, it's, if you look at the chart, it shows the capacity ratio of a five eighths and three quarter inch meters of one.
Right, I see that, but it doesn't, it does not state in here that that's the basis for which we calculate the additional charge.
Well, a capacity ratio of one shows that that's the, that is by definition the base because everything else is scaled upon that.
Okay. Well, again, my motion is we approve the water, the water capital cost recovery fee as presented and effective immediately.
So I, I will second that so the Cal can finish asking questions and then I.
No, I'm good.
Okay, so, so what your motion is, is that we basically rescind the previous capital recovery fee rate structure and adopt this new one?
Well, the, the, actually, the residential's the same. This is just inclusive of all of them.
This is just a new one, this is replacing everything else.
Right, but the residential is different than this, what, the one that we approved previous?
No, it was the five eighths inch, three quarter inch meter, the twenty-three hundred dollars.
Okay, so it's integrated into this.
Correct, this is a comprehensive, it's easier and store, instead of, um, delineating customer class, we're just going by meter size. If you say, if you're a residential customer and you want a two inch meter, you're gonna pay eighteen thousand dollars to gain capacity.
Okay, I understand.
This is typical of what everybody else does.
Okay.
We were the oddball.
Well, that's not unusual. Okay, okay, I get it.
Okay. Alright.
Got a motion in a second?
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed, unanimous? Next item, ah, consider approval of the water rate implementation date
Well.
Of March first.
Surprisingly, the, the city was on top of this and they've already integrated all the numbers, so we can, we can effectively approve this March first. Implement it officially March first.
Correct, Charlie.
That's.
Well, that's even worse, it's getting worse, I can't read most of it.
That's your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
What do you say it?
We're taking the March.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the city's ready?
You made the motion.
I did, approve it March first.
And I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I have a question. I'm trying not to bring bad blood here with us, but what kind of, what kind of guarantees do we have that we will actually be able to see that this is happening with the city?
What do you mean?
Okay, um, in the past, yes, billing, in the past, we've always had different areas that we were na- not able to be able to count for in our billing with the city. So how will we know that this is actually happening as customers come on that, that we're getting the right documentation back?
So, in, we get a, a, we get a number of reports now, when I first started, we only got one or two reports, now we're, I think we're up to five or six a month. Um, but this base rate will be in a column. Um, the usage fees, we can do some backend checks on the database that we get to ensure that these rates have been allocated appropriately.
Okay.
I understand also correctly, ah, that the city and, and Joseph have gone through every account and we've agreed whose city, whose county and everything has been good.
It's about, yeah, the customer audits is complete now.
Yeah, the customer audit's been done every year, so they do an internal audit themselves. They're actually gonna do a third party audit, I, I think Brandon said every third year. Um, so, based on the last audit that was completed in, um, April of last year, there were around fifty customers that were, um, that should have been ours and they have now been, they, they've been fixing their system.
And Joseph knocked pretty quick with the money ain't adding up.
Yes.
Good, good.
I got a motion in a second. All in favor? All opposed, unanimous? Next item, other business, the next regular scheduled meeting will be held Wednesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at eight thirty AM in the courthouse annex meeting room. Um, we do have an executive session coming up, secretary treasurer comments?
None.
Ah, general manager comments?
So I will say that we are, um, our budget is constantly evolving every day, ah, for FY twenty-six. Um, I don't know if you guys are gonna be in a position to approve the budget in March. I will present it in the planning committee, the finance committee, um, depending on whatever changes that y'all want. I know I gave you a brief overview last month, but, um, as long as we approve our budget by the April meeting, we'll be in plenty of time for the county to roll it into theirs and advertise so they can vote in June.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Joseph, do you plan on budgeting for additional employees in our twen- twenty-six, twenty-seven budget?
So, right now, um, we do have a GIS technician that has been added to the budget, but we're showing a indirect call or a transfer in from Spalding County to pay for that position. So there is one person.
So, so I'm asking that because of the different projects that you say that, that could come on board or that, or different services that we may have to be responsible for that, you know, could you, would you be projecting that within, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days, we're gonna need two more people, are we gonna need additional people to do? Because I think it's important that we look.
This is twenty-five, twenty-six, right?
So that, we're, we're talking about the twenty-six budget, I failed to mention in the sewer side, I've prepared a budget assuming that we are gonna get into the sewer business at the end of FY twenty-six, so there is two and a half full-time equivalents that have been put in that budget. But when you asked a specific question of, I, I'm assuming that you're referring back to the industrial pretreatment side and the additional complexities.
In either side, water or sewer?
We do have the one in GIS, the two and a half in sewer, but we're not adding anything to our administrative staff for permit compliance, so no. Ah, we're only adding the field staff and a GIS technician to support county functions. Um, but I, I definitely think it's something we need to think through. One thing I will tell you, with this, um, I don't think any of the new developments that are coming online, at the same time our sewer system should be up and running. I think it's to, to typical domestic waste, so we probably aren't gonna run into this issue until FY twenty-seven.
Okay.
But I will keep you posted in the event that something happens, there may be some contractual stuff that we could hire, um, somebody in the short term on a, on, on a contract basis to perform this.
So is that GIS tech position going to be the county's employee?
No, it'll be our employee.
But you said there was a credit?
There will, so, we've provided a, we're working with the county on generating a description. Once we get their approval that this is, it, it meets their objectives, we're gonna give it to Steve, Steve will present it to the BOC, we should get a resolution saying that they acknowledge and they will pay the personnel cost.
We're just swapping money back and forth.
Correct.
Because they're doing a lot of county GIS work, yeah.
We're just swapping money back and forth.
So to. So Steve and I mentioned, we, we talked about this, we didn't think that we were originally gonna be ready until probably the end of FY twenty-six. But to the credit of our team, when you hire the right people, you can spin up things really quick and the GIS department is doing phenomenal things. So now, county staff has seen the power that, ah, Chris and Matthew have at their fingertips and it's something that they can, they can use and, um, scale pretty quickly. So, Steve at the, I, I wanna say it was two or two and a half, three weeks ago when we were having an internal meeting to understand stormwater and how it, how it could kinda, how GIS could support this. It was determined at that time that it's, it's probably time to pull the trigger for the county to support this. We've been tracking our staff's time and their capacity on a weekly basis is getting forty-five, almost fifty percent. So, we're working through how are we going to bill the county for the time? Um, we're, I, we're working on that right now.
So, just a, just a, a question that I'm ass- having in my mind, does the water authority or the sewer authority generally have anything to do with stormwater? Because I know that, that we're talking about the counties, we're just talking about setting up stormwater, so that's just a totally different area than what it is that we're, we're doing.
Correct, if you look at, um, most authorities that have stormwater, it's because the county either sold it to them or the state stepped in and said, no, you're gonna, you're gonna handle it.
Okay.
I think a lot of it has to do with the billing component and that the authority has that set up already and tends to.
Maybe, but the, the county, counties and municipalities can put it on their tax bill. So, that's typically not the, the issue, it's who typically has the staff to do it and it's usually through your public works department.
Macon Water Authority, they do stormwater now, but they, basically the city of Macon gave it to Macon Water Authority.
Okay, so it's generally not the water.
Yeah, Clayton County is separate, isn't it?
No, the water authority does it.
The water authority does it, but they got a different department?
Yeah, different department.
It's, it's different, I think the city of Griffin has stormwater, I don't know if they ever actually do anything with it.
They charge it, right?
Absolutely do. There's a non.
It. Profit center.
Well, it just seemed to me that it would kinda be something that would go like this and so that's why I was trying to delineate on why we wouldn't be doing it.
Fayette County had it and got out of it.
They got out of it in order to pass the T-Sloes.
By creation, creating legislation does not go into the general budget, it's all spent on stormwater. It is not a profit center.
The only reason.
We can't tell.
Yeah, the only reason why we were kinda
We can't tell.
brought into this conversation.
Yeah.
It has to be used only for stormwater, that was.
Yeah, 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 but, yeah.
So it's not a profit center, it's a.
Everybody does seem to do it a little different, like Fayette County had got into it and they got out to pass, you said, T-Sloes?
I believe in T-Sloes.
Yeah, so they abandoned it, it just depends.
Stormwater is usually for recovery of sewer, isn't it?
No.
No.
I, I, I understand that, but stormwater runoff goes into the sewer with the city. Our whole goal is to keep their stormwater out of our sewer.
Yeah, you don't want combined, you don't want a combined system.
No, I understand that. So what would be the, for, for our purposes, stormwater would be only for the sewer system?
No, so, the only reason why we were in, involved in the conversation is because GIS is gonna be a major component to support the county and this stormwater utility setup.
Yeah.
So, we sat and we talked through different strategies, um, and it was at that time that they're gonna need some help and we have a lot of projects that we're currently working on, um, so it, the, the county always knew that they were gonna probably need to support and put somebody in this department. We just didn't think that it was gonna be so soon.
For the three people watching this on YouTube, the Spalding County Water Authority is not in the stormwater business.
In my opinion, does not want to be.
Did you say that in French and Spanish? Two.
Won't there be any confusion? Because yesterday we was getting blamed for a sewer spill for a system we don't even have.
Okay, sorry about taking down the rabbit hole, but yeah.
Okay.
Now, any other comments, Mr. General Manager?
That's it.
Authority member comments, Ms. Wanda? Cal? Clay?
None today.
Glenn? Yep.
Nope.
I have a couple, um, on March third, ah, Dick, Joseph and myself will be given a presentation of Spalding County Board of Commissioners during their workshop um, to request a sum of money to help fund the operation and maintenance of the new sewer plant. Joseph has been working on the presentation this week, which I will review after this meeting, if that was today, right? Um, also, I had, we had talked about in the planning committee meeting, um, this past planning committee meeting about presenting the contract to be signed in March for the phase two of the sewer project. Cal, myself and Joseph met with Todd, Todd Barnes. Todd Barnes yesterday, who's Raymond James, the bond guy. And, um, we're not gonna have the terms from the GFA loan until
June one.
June one. And there's a possibility, Glenn had directed Joseph to, ah, Three Rivers, there's actually a possibility we may be able to get an economic development grant, um, that you can apply for at any time, it's all tied to jobs and stuff. So anyways, that, actually presenting that contract to sign on, to sign off, get voted on, is probably gonna get kicked to June first or to June meeting. And the reason for that is, is, um, our bond situation, apparently, currently we have an early call-in penalty, is that the correct way to say it, Cal?
Yeah, we can call those bonds without penalties.
We can call those bonds beginning around June, ninety days early, basically from August, we can call them and not have any penalties and the finance and everything just looks more attractive if we wait till June. So that's what.
Does the finance look more attractive, what?
The financing just looks more attractive if we wait till June.
We can call them. We don't, we don't make a double bond payment, Dick, we were looking at, ah, what? Almost three million dollars a month in double bond payments, but, a- and we also got a break, we don't have to pay anything. Most likely we won't have to pay anything but interest until the project is complete, even with Raymond James bond issue.
Well, that's good, you know, I know, I, I knew there was a prepayment, but it drops off, so that's great.
It do, it does look more, um, optimistic, Joseph is checking with the engineers and contractors to make sure they can hold the current price because, you know, inflation and everything, um, that could skew the numbers a little bit, but I, after talking to Cal yesterday and, and talking to this bond guy, it, it seems to be the logical choice to do is to kick this to June. I, I'm not, I kinda wanted to keep the schedule, of course, once we do that, the whole schedule's gonna slide, but I think cash flow wise, it, it's far more attractive to us to do that.
Correct.
But this doesn't set us off of our main track that we're on in terms of the benchmarks that, that.
It'll set us off on the completion date, yes. About ninety days.
Ninety days.
So we're keeping, I'm keeping the design team and the, the PDB team focused on making sure that the contract's ready. Ah, we're working, trying to get the MPDS permit in hand, get the final documents, ah, crafted. So we're, we're still working on the, the original timeline. Ah, the contractor had slated that he was going to put tractors on the ground starting April one. So, if that doesn't happen and he won't do that until he has a signed contract and that shifts till June, you're, you're talking about a, a ninety day, but I, there's.
Paying the bills, it, it's a lot more attractive just to wait another ninety days.
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as we sign the contract, the cash flow that we're gonna need on a monthly basis is about one and a half million dollars.
Oh, but this doesn't, this won't affect the ARPA money that we
No.
have spent or we have said we've spent? I just wanna make sure we're not giving any money back.
Correct, so we, we're, we have to spend the ARPA funds by twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-six. We obligated them by the twenty, by twenty twenty-four, so we satisfied that and honestly, if, if, um, Lake Shore bought the pipe today and the generator, we would have satisfied the ARPA funds all the, the expenses.
As long as we don't give any money back.
They're ordered, the pipe and the generators are ordered, it's just they got long lead times. So, by sliding this out ninety days, by us going ahead and buying the pipe and, I mean, we haven't wrecked the schedule as much as you would think.
Okay.
Because you still gotta wait on the equipment if you build and stuff like that.
Also, included inflation on all that too, because we already got it.
Well, we got up to a certain point, I don't know if there's gonna be any more on top after, if we wait another ninety days, that's what we're checking on right now.
You said it's already been ordered, so there's a bit of price there.
Well, oh, I'm, oh, the pipe and the generator, yes.
Yeah, I'm saying that's.
I'm talking about the rest of the contract.
I was saying that, yeah.
We wanna say thank you to Cal and Wade and Joseph, ah.
Don't thank me, I had a headache when I left.
This is big, big, this is big money.
Don't thank me, I had a headache when I left, I, I just was like.
This is big money and working, understanding how to do it, ah, is a complicated issue and if it's your first time into it, um, you can get really messed up quick.
Are you ready for my motion?
Are you ready for my motion?
We have an executive session to discuss or vote on the acquisition disposition or lease of real estate as provided in the official code Georgia annotated fifty dash fourteen dash three B one.
I move that we move into executive session for the stated purpose.
I second him.
We got a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Yeah, miss. We are in executive session.
Which room are we going to? The county or ours?
Ours. Let's go to ours.
I have wondered.
Yep, yep.
A little bit challenging. You don't have to know. It's like your computer. Well, I think it's just a while. You're talking about something and next minute you get an advertisement.
Yes, yes.
Wham, how did you? I'm like, I need to get a dog mat. Next thing that comes up on my phone is dog mats.
Were you, were you looking for, for the Nissan Hyundai merger or?
I think it would probably be a good thing.
I think it's going to be a good thing, especially for the dealers.
I'd love the Honda dealer. I don't think I'm going to get a point out of it, but you know, they say it's back on now. They're talking about it.
Oh, wow.
Oh, is it?
And we're not going to be able to do it if we need to get into a great deal.
Which is worse, right?
Yeah.
So I'm okay, just, like I said, it just makes me feel complicated. Once in a while, like I'm a little dizzy or something.
How much longer do you have?
Um, just past half one, I think about, so I have basically two more months.
You can put a spray fill.
I kept your head. Yeah, well, I didn't wanna look like you, I said, why are you?
Nobody wants to look like me.
Back into, um, open session.
Mr. Terran. I move we exit.
Jim is best with me, bear with me.
Executive session to resume, uh, open session.
I got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
We got a second by Mr. Davis. All in favor, please raise your hand. unanimous.
Ready for a motion, sir?
Bear, bear with me, I gotta get my eyeballs back on. I don't know what I just wrote. Yes, sir, make the motion, please.
Okay, I move that we authorize our general manager approval to begin negotiation for sewer capacity reservation agreements tied to real property.
Second. We got a motion and a second by Mr. Skinner. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, unanimous.
And.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to adjourn, second by Mr. Davis, all in favor. We are adjourned.
And I'm, did I miss what this book is for?
No, I, no.
It's not for us.